It is 7:17 PM on Monday, July 15, 2019, and this is a regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. Thanks for your patience, we have a little bit of a delayed start tonight because of the study session that preceded us. In attendance this evening, we have Board members Paula Cole, Peter Tensing, Tim Polis, Christine Malik, and John Ashmead. We also have Superintendent Unowski with us at the Board Table and are in between student Board members at the moment, given the summer season, but look forward to welcoming our student Board members back in the fall for the 2019-2020 school year. We will strive to remain focused on the Richfield Public Schools' mission statement as we conduct our meeting this evening. "Richfield Public Schools Inspires and Empowers Each Individual to Learn, Grow, and Excel." So, special welcome to everybody with us this evening, both for our official business meeting, as well as for the study session that we just had, which was wonderfully attended, especially in light of the weather outside. So, thank you to everybody who joined us. There are printed copies of the agenda on the table near the door, and the full Board packet is available online if you would like to follow along with us this meeting, this evening, excuse me. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda before us, and I was going to ask for the Board's flexibility in adjusting the agenda in case we had any late arrivals for public comment because of our different location and because of the weather, but because we're at 7:18, I think it's probably unlikely we're still going to have someone coming in in the next few minutes, but if necessary, I would ask for the Board's flexibility if somebody does still arrive and would like to make public comments. Is anyone prepared to move the agenda as presented with that flexibility noted?
So, move. Start.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair votes aye and the agenda is approved. Moving into the Information and Proposals Non-Auction Items section of the agenda, as this is the only scheduled meeting of the month, we will begin with time for public comments. We have one request for public comment this evening, so before that first comment, I want to provide a brief overview of our guidelines. As outlined in Board Policy 216, we welcome comments from members of the public. We ask that you ensure your comments are consistent with our policy, especially around protecting the privacy rights of individual students and staff members. Members of the public have three minutes to speak unless translation is required, in which case, six minutes are provided. Mary, our Board Secretary, will indicate when your time is drawing to a close. Thank you in advance for sharing your thoughts with us, and know that even though we will not be responding in the moment, this evening, that we will take your comments very seriously, and you may receive follow-up from us or a member of the staff. So, Lori Hummiston, we invite you to come forward. Is there a place that would be best first down?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Guys, this microphone should be there.
Fantastic, and Mary will start the time once you begin.
Thank you for allowing me to have a comment tonight. I'm Lori Hummiston, I'm a 20-year resident at Richfield, and some of the activities that I'm involved with here in the district is our heat. So, I'm President of RHS Girls' Human Diagnostics, and just a member of the Marching Spartans and Supervising Team. I'm a supporting member of the inter community at both RHS and RMS, and I've been a member of the Activities Advisory Board for the last year. I'm here to speak in support of the branding package that'll be presented tonight. This process actually has started for me about 16 years ago, as a young mom of two daughters here in the city, and I was concerned about the identity of what I was doing to Richfield Public Schools, and considered other options and interviewed other schools. But the teachers and the people here in the district boosted my confidence as opposed to after the parents, and we stayed in the district and very happily so. I've attended many meetings over the last 18 months, not only on the Activities Advisory Board, but also as part of the Reimagine Richfield project. I'm here tonight again to support, to voice support for the branding package, not only as representative of the groups that I'm involved with, but also as a longtime resident at Richfield. I think it's an exciting time for our students and parents and this community to feel a part of one Richfield and one district, rather than a lot of parts of that whole. And I'm hoping that's what we'll listen to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you for sharing with us. The next opportunity for public comment will be at our Board Meeting on Monday, August 5th, and this is a question for Mary or Steve. Do we have a tentative location for that meeting at this time?
I would guess that we are going to be in this location again, given the state of the current requirements.
Okay, so we will confirm that and make sure that it is very well-publicized, but tentatively plan on this room on August 5th for anybody watching, listening, or present that is interested in making public comment at our next meeting. So, we now move into the Superintendent Update, which this evening contains several items. Just a reminder, in this section of the agenda, we are not taking action on any of these items, but instead receive reports and updates from staff, and this is an opportunity for Board members to ask questions and share thoughts on things that may come back to us in the future for action. So, I will turn it over to Superintendent Unowski.
All right, so a couple of items up with us today. We have our Facilities Project update, and Special Education update, and unduplicated chat account. So, I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Bolte and bring an update starting with our district-wide furniture update, and talk a little bit about some of the amazing capital facility improvements that have put us in this beautiful venue for the evening.
The fund relocation is based, and so I would agree with him now. As we've talked about, you're right along the same, if you know that we have major construction going on at the high school at STEM and RDS. In addition to that, there was really a lot of planning that took place over the summer, and one of those significant things, in addition to the actual structures of the building that will be changing, is the furniture that's being used in the classrooms, and opportunities for changing the instructional environment in those ways. Mole and ICS have partnered with teachers across the district, really when we're looking at especially at the elementary level. It's not just those buildings that are under construction right now that have a chance to participate in the process, but we engage teachers at each one of our four elementary buildings in the process, so we can be aligned in those efforts, not just for this year's summer projects, but for the summer projects that have to come, as well as some other changes that way. And then following that presentation, my role, Andy will be coming up and sharing an update on Girl Wrap with the stats and constructions, show you some of the inside views and some of the other areas that are taking place in that. So, I'm going to turn it over to Nick Lepp, and then Mole, come on.
Great, thank you. Again, as Craig said, the project process is kind of a nonchalant, we're going to follow similar themes to the building, space planning, and the whole renovation projects. We did have four groups specifically set aside, but I created a group for more, kind of creating elementary's by classroom standards. And then we also created individual user groups, again, much like we did for the various departments at all the schools, where we really talked about their furniture. A couple of the general things that we were trying to do is obviously create consistency, much like our last presentation, or one of our previous presentations on materials and finishes, again, trying to create that consistency kind of across the district. So, what we find is that there are lots of opportunities to do that, similarly our specialized classrooms that have different versions of furniture, but for the most part, it's all pretty straightforward and very consistent, and we're doing a lot of other scripts as well. So, again, I think with that, I'll let Nick run through the general aspects.
Sure, so, as nicely we met with members from all the elementary schools, we're going to kind of demonstrate our classroom kit of parts. As you see up in the slide here, I'm going to kind of explain what kit of parts is, that each classroom, where the people move in, have that same kit of furniture. We understand that some people may like certain things more than others, and the teachers tonight switch them around, but the idea is that each classroom is open to a variety of things, for learners, for teaching styles. You can see here we have a combination of some traditionals, some chairs, some that wiggle a little bit, some that wiggle a little bit, personal is a little bit more active, and then some more comfortable seating options. We also have a combination of large tables and individual desks, ready to work or individual work, and then some other storage pieces, and another approach of this, which is keeping the classroom really flexible, so that they can accommodate multiple types of things. And this is an example of the layout, this is from the RDLS. You can see there's some booth tables, and then also some individual more desks, those could also be pushed together to make all the tables, so there's lots of flexibility with that kit of parts. And then for all the schools, we kind of have a similar, I don't know what the kit of parts is, but it's a little bit different from the elementary schools, their classrooms, so very similar pieces from school to school. Once again, we want consistency through the district, whether that's quality standards, just the overall look, branding, also its equity. We have a combination of some soft seating pieces for media centers and flex learning areas, so there are mangler space tables, once again, trying to keep things flexible, so as we exchange the furniture, we can make those changes as well. And then here is a floor plan of the RDLS media center, showing how some of these spaces are implemented. Different tables and chairs, then here at STEM, showing how some of those same pieces were there, and then for the high school.
There are a few little questions on the, sort of, some of the soft pieces, there's that little piece on the very front, is that a power?
That is a power. We didn't add that for, sometimes that's a piece we did when there weren't power opportunities within the space itself. Here's the quote, oh, it's kind of now, they're a big part of how we're going to use the space.
Yeah, thank you.
And once again, this is the high school, just showing how those same pieces are incorporated with heights and stuff, change depending on the age of the kids, the overall look and quality of the standard of the school. And some other things that have been going on, kind of related to furniture, interior room signage is something that we're working on. We'll of course have a branding today, so we're hoping to incorporate that into the building's signage. Window blinds, you're probably aware that there are a lot of sort of cold lines throughout the district, but it may not be up to today's standard as far as quality, or even light filtering, we're working on replacing those with light filtering shades. Not so much today, where we need the blacked-out shades, since the technology is from a digital monitor, you don't worry about protecting, so we put a light filtering shade in order to use some of that light to go to wear. And these blinds can just be ordered as the phase of projects are completed. And then some overall time endings. Furniture will be installed as some of the phases are completed, so this August, RDLS, and then STEM Phase 1 will install, and then the high school Phase 1 that will install. Earlier, maybe mid-August, and then later August, we're Phase 2, which is the media center and the upper area. And then upcoming, we will be needing smaller groups for Centennial, Sheridan, and Middle Schools, so they can continue to have furniture when the doors open. And then once again, they'll be purchased, once those products are completed. Any questions?
I'm just very excited, it's a teacher, to see this city, this, I'm wondering, they're gonna fight for it, so. What teachers, we have ways of being asked, as we said.
We've heard that sometimes they like to switch it up, like one on the little chair, and they change.
Oh, no, it's about a week, we, yeah.
Can you speak to the part, like, how this furniture or kit of parts was arrived at, and the input from staff and other groups, and how we balanced needs and wants?
Sure, so, we had three different floor planning meetings with multiple members from the four elementary schools. Samples were brought in, so they could kind of try to review the different things, give an idea of comfort levels, and how we needed to move the things. So, to all those requests, obviously, it's hard to write up on different parts for multiple things, but we tried to provide a balance of these options. We understand that there might be some switching around, if certain teachers are kind of the traditional chair desk, or some might give more kind of the, you know, more flexible furniture, and they might switch, but it is that we'll provide one thing, and then if they want to change it afterwards, that's possible as well.
I can jump in too. We had, we really pushed the groups to reach out to other teachers in other districts, and get some, let's see what kinds of things they have to do, or if they weren't happy with it. So, we got some additional feedback, so I think, you know, that was helpful, just to get, you know, I think also shared goals, and then experimented a little bit with various, I'm not sure exactly how they were getting some of the things, but some, they also had some additional feedback, maybe some of, I guess you might say, more, more audacious to some of this, and so it was really nice to kind of have, you know, different groups of different opinions on what was working and what wasn't.
Thanks.
The one thing I was going to say is, I just, I appreciate that, you know, there are differences in terms of the age levels, but also there's going to be some consistency across our buildings, because I think, again, as we're talking about, how do we have a consistent and coherent identity about who we are in the district, things like this matter too. So, I think, you know, the work that you've already shared with us around the color palette, and then now seeing the sort of next version of this is really exciting, as we're starting to see these pieces come together.
And the other thing I was going to mention is, you know, we kind of get to that, you know, showed you the media center, but I would say all those swatches, particularly the high school commons area, you see some of the hints of that, and where it's, as you apply things and stuff, and so again, it really adds a whole different character to the room, and it's something.
All right, so we're going to keep on moving now to the Facility Project update. Come on, bring on.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, a quick update on the Facility Projects. So, current project design status, as Mike and Nick Lepp touched on, we're finalizing the signage and the window treatments, got those underway right now, and then we're working on the future design phase work, furniture at the high school specifically. We received some, we're able to finalize the branding finalization, so we're able to finalize that signage piece, and then as they talked about, the roller curtain or the roller shades, we've got that, and they're in the, two very specific opacities, if that's the correct word, for how much light we have to, and we've just got to take one final look at those accordingly, to make sure that the technology will work both, and then we'll get those orders released as well. Centennial Elementary, we've got the design documents have been issued for estimates, we're currently working on those estimates, and we should hope those are ready by the end of next week. Sheridan Hills is expected to be issued here on July 16th for estimates, and then we have a three weeks of estimating in that. And then Middle School is the last one to get issued for this next summer's phase of projects, that's scheduled to be issued on July 26th for estimates on that. So, current project status, we'll start off with RDLS. So, we've got some pictures here of the kitchen construction at RDLS. You can see in the top photo, the plumbing pipes have all been roughed in, and the main brick block getting installed there in the lower one. Structural steel did begin being set this week on the media center addition, and we're continuing with the concrete block work, as mechanical work has to be roughed in as that concrete block comes up. Interior of RDLS, so this is a picture of some of the entry and media center addition. So, that picture that you're looking at at the top there is right where the new office area is going to be, so that's literally one day, I can't remember the exact date of it now, but when I was putting this together, this is one day, and then the picture below it is the following day, with all plumbing roughed in, those trenches. So, that's just an example of how much progress takes place at a given date. Couple more pictures of RDLS, so the one in the upper left portion of the screen is down in the lower level, that's all the mechanical piping that's roughed in. Down there, the picture to the right is one of the standard classrooms with the, you know, the flooring's gone, the mechanical unit on the outside wall has been taken away, we've got roughings going on in the tunnel underneath that. The lower left picture is a picture of the corridor, and the lower right picture is also kind of one of those common area flex areas, you can just see like the ductwork up at the top, and I've seen it get been tore off, the ductwork stand, we're forging ahead. So, just to touch base on STEM, or on RDLS overall, we are on schedule, we've had some setbacks on a few things, we've eliminated a lot of the full time within the schedule, and our primary focus is to make sure that the entry and the kitchen are done by the time school starts, as long as, as well as all the interior spaces. We've had a little bit of a delay on the front end with the transformer relocation, coordinating with Xcel Energy, so that put the kitchen addition behind a little bit, but like I said, we're working with these contractors on an hourly basis, basically, updating schedules, and the full time is eliminated, we can't really, there aren't much room for any more setbacks, but we're still fortunate to have, we've got a lot of long days ahead of us. We're positive, we're optimistic that things will go well, and we always do. Current project status at STEM, so this is a picture of some of the interior renovations at STEM, we don't have any additions going on this year, this summer, but the interior renovations, so this is some of the new bathroom work that's getting completed, lower level, and then the lower picture is also that stud frame, the mouse studs for one of those new bathrooms. So, previously on the second and third floor of STEM, on one corner, there was a men's bathroom, or boys' bathroom, and on the other corner, there was a girls' bathroom. So, we've got those two spaces, and now there will be a boys' and girls', and boys' and girls' on each corner, on both the second and third floor, so kids don't have to walk halfway around the building to get to the respective bathrooms. So, one of the pictures at STEM, this is, the upper left-hand corner is the media center, so what you're seeing there is actually one of the columns, and that tile is installed, those little red things are spacers in the tile, so we're farther along on STEM than we are in some of the other ones, it's looking really well in there. The upper right-hand corner is the former special, or former pre-kated room, that was right by, when you walk in the door, it had tiered seats, or tiered steps that used to be a music room, so that all has been demolished out there, that's nice and clean in there. And then, these other two pictures are the bathrooms, and one of the flexible spaces up on the second floor across from the media center, because we tore out some of those rooms, and we're creating some small breakout rooms, as well as some flexible areas spaces. Our current project or overall status at STEM in general is, we're on track with that schedule, we haven't seen too many unforeseen in that project when things are going as planned, so that's, that's our shining star this summer so far. The high school project, so this is a picture of the entrance addition, we're finally at those final footings board, and we're working out on the ground on that. We've had quite a few delays on the front entrance addition at the high schools, starting with soil corrections, we found a pile of debris when we were excavating for it, there was several electrical lines, main power service coming into the building, then coordinating with Xcel, getting that temporarily relocated, coordinating temporary generators setting in that, along with utility work that takes place in front of the building, so it's been a, it's been a struggle, and the rains obviously help out with the exterior, but similar status that is RDLS, we're working with the contractors hourly on this one, and we've got the full time pulled out of the schedule, it looks like we're, we should be able to make some port, the majority of the portions of it, but we'll be back with a few show updates on that. We've got contingency plans that we're working on already, just as a safety precaution on that. Interior of the high school, so this is the former district office space, the future high school administration area, so that's well underway, that's on track, because that was an area we could get in early, and it's not outside, so kind of at that, that we're controlled at our own. So, that's, some of that beefed out now, actually, and we're moving into finishes, all the mechanical stuff is roughed in, electrical, we're looking pretty good there. The next slide, so this is actually in the courtyard, so we're standing up in the courtyard. We had to put in helical piers to support the new structure, but helical piers are like giant screw anchors that go in, so you don't have to dig out about a real twenty combination. They basically screw into the ground until they reach a certain torque, and then we pour, so the top picture is the forming of the concrete pad that's formed on top of that pier that supports everything. You know, as luck would have it, when we went to put in the helical piers, we get a main power line that was 16 feet below grade, which locations don't show that. When we found that, they dug down to repair it, and thought that it was encased in asbestos, so they made the contractors come in, and remove the asbestos and repair that. So, it's kind of one of those things that hurry up and go, and then it's a quick stop, and then we dig down, and then it's another, okay, now we got to get these things. There's been some struggles out there, but.
We were appreciating that one of the workers is hydrating in that picture, in case.
I know.
We want people to take care of themselves while they are doing their work, so.
We've had OSHA out multiple times, Ellis Black, the general contractor in the project, is, they have, they have, they have an OSHA consultation, where they come out and they actually walk the job site and tell you what they see. It's a precaution, it's good business practice, what they find in their consultation, they won't find you for, they'll give you direction, then you have certain moments to correct that, so hydration is usually one of them, you have to make sure that you have, you have a lot of, a lot of workers. This is some of the interior pictures at the high school, so this is kind of out in the common area, we're tearing out block walls, this is kind of throughout from the kitchen, this is outside of the auditorium, so we've got some new framing going outside the auditorium, because there's a ductwork that comes up for the new mechanical system, so when you're looking at the auditorium, the main entrance in the auditorium is going to look certainly different, as you saw in some of the video mockings previously. Next one, we got some different pictures here, so that upper left-hand corner is the former high school administration area, so this would be if you're standing on the east side of that hallway, looking back at the high school, the principal's office essentially. The upper right is the, just one of the mechanical units down in the basements, or in the lower level. The lower left is another one of those pictures of the high school administration area with demolition, we got a lot of clay kind of block that we've tore out, and then the lower right is some of the kitchen work that we've got going, so we've got a lot of softening that's taking place, we get the plumbing roughens. More wonderful pictures, the upper left-hand corner is the media center, so that's completely blown up, the fluke walls getting framed up, it's more of an open concept, you can see we just frayed around some of the columns, and you see up in the upper left-hand corner, we put some new finishes on that. The upper right-hand picture is all mechanical, it's on, there's some areas in the lower level where it's just dirt on the ground, so it's very shallow as dirt, we had a couple that all on poly, in order to get rid of the asbestos, because if the asbestos falls in dirt, then you better, so just a lot of precautions and steps in the process. The lower left is the media center, and the lower right is a portion of the commons, this picture was taken like if you're standing in Ms. Rosen's former office, so that gives you a little concept, looking back towards the guidance area, so that's all been opened up, so it's wide open there, it starts to give you a real good feel for what's going on, just much cleaner interior. Any questions?
Just, I'm just curious, how does it come to be that someone buries that, that line, 16 feet below?
There's a, there's a really deep mechanical room underneath the auditorium, and so there's a feeder that came out of there, and went 16, and then it cut across to hit some other lower level portion of the building, and that power feed powered all the elevators in the building, all things.
Okay, and for safety, it was coated in asbestos?
Yeah. Well, it was insulated material that we had.
To be fair, right, it was state-of-the-art.
We, there's, there's quite a bit of, I mean, as you guys are all fully aware, I'm sure, via error reports that are required for the school, where it identifies all the asbestos, so that identifies all of those materials without destructive investigation.
Correct, right.
So, as we get into demolition, we're finding things, I mean, just last week, one of the kitchen walls, we opened up one of the kitchen walls, and there was asbestos glue, mastic pot within that wall cavity, so that was another very awkward stop. Okay, now we got the big contractor coming up, and they have to come in after hours and get rid of the asbestos, and test the air, and sort it out, all that stuff. They've been on site full-time doing their work, there's been, there was one scenario where a piece of asbestos was, the insulation was disturbed by one of the workers, they were on, on right away, you know, the workers are very aware of that, and there was a little bit of concern, IEA was there, they sampled the air, they tested everything, everything came back free and clear, which was great, so it's a very contained process, and all of our, we're very aware of that.
Thank you.
My question, I don't know if it's for you, Andy, or for members of the staff, but my first year of teaching, I started school three weeks late because of construction that was not done on time, it was a big project, but I don't think it even comes close to what we are undertaking here, so my question is probably the obvious, what are our contingency plans in case we run into even more unforeseen things? I completely know that people are working as hard as they can, as fast as they can, and things still happen, so I'm curious what the contingencies are at this point.
So, we've, we itemize it, right, everything's phased, and there's certain areas that are planned, so the message that we've been streaming is the classroom tower, so the, on our plans is the C Wing, I think it's the north classroom tower, so we're working on the mechanical units in there, that's pretty straightforward, so we have to have those up and operating, so kids can have class. That's priority number one, priority number two is the kitchen, to be able to feed the kids. After that, the high school administration area, we're sitting pretty on that, that looks like we shouldn't have any issues on that. If the main entry's not done, we're going to have to look at routing people through door five as they are right now, or off of area. What's the other areas that we would have? The commons area. The commons area, um, so that's where everybody's going to eat lunch essentially. So we've already ran the calculations and if we don't have the addition done for the, where the commons bumps out, you can see how we've got it clear open. With the square footage of existing areas that we have without those additions, we're 690 some square feet shy of what the old cafeteria was without putting a table within the hallway, you know, keeping the hallways as wide as they are right now in front of the auditorium, for example. So we've got enough space we think to make that doable as well. We're not telling the contractors that.
No.
There's no, if they're watching, they're, they're seeing our hand a little bit, but, um, so anyway, that's, I mean, that's our role, make sure that we have those contingency plans in place in the broken school.
And it sounds as though then I would assume RDLS would be the other one where you said there have been some things that have sort of.
Yep.
tightened that, uh, buffer time that we had.
Yep.
Do you have a similar answer for RDLS then I see?
Well, RDLS, we've got the main, the main entrance area is the main, is the big thing that's going to be. I mean, worst case scenario, we're not going to have it ready for Senora Chauza, her office space would be what, what would be the, the impact. Uh, kitchen obviously is a concern. Again, not going to want to have it have to do this in my career in the K-12 industry, but there is scenarios. We've done it actually on the, on the startup projects where we shut down kitchens early and sort of bang lunches for a week in order to get in there early. So that would be the worst case scenario, I think, at RDLS as far as the kitchen related. Um, and then within RDLS, there's actually an empty classroom. So we have a spot for an empty classroom, unassigned classroom, that we could house office staff if we need to. These are my favorite of the places. I haven't really gone by inspiration or anyone else.
I appreciate that you have that.
But, but reasonable to say that you'll know more in, at our August 5th meeting.
Absolutely.
And ever more if there's another August one and, 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 and you won't be the only one compelled to, to speak about them, I imagine, at that point.
I'm, I'm happy to be the guy that stands and remarks, but I mean, I hear why we speak to you about them in August and I'm giving you more perhaps. So we had a, so Wolf's team and our team at ACS, we had a very lengthy meeting with, uh, the president of Alice Black. Because they're actually the general contractor in the high school and RDLS, I'm providing. And they're well aware of what they're up against and basically what we told is you just be a hundred percent honest with us and clear where our risks are and what we're going to come in. They're aware of what we absolutely need to have functioning to be able to run school. And as, as Andy pointed out, we do have the capacity to bang lunch and do something different if needed at RDLS.
Nice outdo. I mean, I think they can really, really have me to leave their picnic, picnic lunches is what we call those. Nah, outside.
Where do we have them? Uh, they mobilized today and they're working on getting some of the hazardous materials wrapped. Um, they're waiting on their permit from the state. It's supposed to be in Thursday or Friday. And so they're looking at early next week to actually do the, the heavy demo. That was the latest as of 4:45 this afternoon. Very good. And we did, they did start tearing the site. Um, so there's been some earth movement over there up to the STEM school, getting ready for the new parking lot.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
You're going to bring on Captain Mary Clarkson to talk about special ed, unduplicated child count. Um, first couple pages in your faculty chart are the presentation. Um, just share specific data. Uh, over the last five years, how many students have been identified, um, and how many kids are in our child count? Um, and a little bit of descriptive information, but that's what we're going to talk a little bit more about. First person turn.
Okay. So, um, thanks for having me this evening. Um, we haven't, I don't believe we did this child count report last year, um, but we thought we could bring it forward again this year. I want to clarify what the difference between unduplicated child count and students served within the district. Unduplicated child count accounts for all residents of Richfield Public Schools that qualify for special education services, regardless of where they're receiving those services. And obviously students receiving services in the district are ones that we actually serve. So our unduplicated child count based on the state report is 793 students that are identified, um, as residents of Richfield that will qualify for special education services. Um, students that receive services, um, provided by Richfield Public Schools, um, are 744. And 98 of those students receiving services within our schools are non-resident students. Um, the resident students that are certainly out of the district, we have 150 students. Of those 150 students, as you all know, were a member of 287, intermediate 287. We have 21 students that are attending, um, programming through 287. 12 of those students are students that are placed through special education. So there's students that technically have higher needs or are lower incidence that we just don't have enough students that need those services that are, that are served, um, through, um, an intermediate. So our higher, uh, need students that need more individualized programming. So we've helped those students. Seven, um, attend CICA, the, um, alternative program through 287. And two students, um, receive stu-, uh, services through 287 through either lay treatment program or court placement. We have 129 students that are either open enrolled into another district or are sort of part of private schools, um, outside of or within Richfield Public Schools.
Excuse me, Mary. Do, do we provide services to, to the 129?
No.
No, okay. That's what you mean by that, by that, we, right.
Yeah. Some of them are, um, enrolled in our private schools. So like if they're attending Holy Angels or Blessed Trinity, we provide the services there. But some may be enrolled into a charter school or into another school district, or maybe homeschool.
Okay.
This is just comparison over the last five years compared to our district enrollment. The district enrollment is taken from our rare we are now report. So it's an October 1st child count. And the special education, unduplicated child count is, um, our December 1st child count. For some reason, it is part of the identification process for special education. Our child count is, special education child count is completed through December 1st. So you'll see, um, there's been a little bit of fluctuation with somewhere between the 770 and 790 has been, you know, our, our students are, are identified as special education. So that's 17 to 18% of the nurses. Here we're taking a look at, um, special education, students receiving special education in the district compared to, um, our general education students by ethnicity. So as you can see, um, there are fewer white students, about 2% fewer white students that, um, are identified as needing special education services compared to our general population. And about, um, five to six percent more are black students that qualify for special education services compared to their general ed account records. A couple percent of ones fewer in our Hispanic. And then we have here a smaller number of our Asian Pacific guy that's pretty close in our American. Here we're looking at comparing, um, special education, um, by diversity, English language, and free and reuse. You'll see the biggest difference, while all of them, I, special education is a higher percentage in each of those areas. Um, the, we identify a greater number of students that qualify for free and reuse as needing special education services. Here's a disability compared to the state. Um, so this is statewide comparison by, um, disability. I want to clarify that low incidence disability is like you're visually impaired, deaf, hard of hearing, traumatic brain injury, developmentally impacted, legally, and TCD. So that's a smaller percentage overall of students, um, that would qualify for services in those areas. Um, so you'll see that as a district, we tend to identify more students, um, for ECSE. That's our early childhood. Um, and more students qualify in Richfield for ASD than compared to the state. And you'll see that we're above the same with, um, our specific learning disability. It's slightly lower in, um, emotional behavior disorders and other health disorders. What I do want, if we go back just for one second, what I do want to know is that when we, um, look at of the 744 students that we serve in the Richfield Public Schools, when we broke this down, um, by depth brackets just within the district, we did notice some interesting data, um, as when we look in particular. So we identify fewer district, or students under the category of EBB. But within Richfield Public Schools, about 59% of our students that qualify for EBB are identified as black where there is, um, I think we have about 15, we have about 19% of all students, um, in special education that, that identify as black. And about, um, 14% in the district. So that's an area that we need to pay attention to. Um, the other area is, um, our specific learning disorders. That we've noticed that there is a, of all of the students in the district that qualify for, um, for SLD, 41% of them are identified as Hispanic, where we have a significantly fewer percentage of students in the district that, um, that are identified as Hispanic. So those are areas that we have to pay attention to. The ECSE, um, one of the things we do identify more students. We are also one of the districts that has significantly expanded our early learning program, which means we have, um, greater access to our early learners, which is, there's one area that for sure even hope that we would identify more students in the early program. Here's a comparison across, um, our West Metro districts, um, and the, you'll see Richfield is first. Over the five-year span, again, we stayed at that 17 to 18%. You'll see Minneapolis and St. Paul have dropped slightly. Um, in Columbia Heights, Brooklyn Park, Lexington, any guy may have all, um, increased slightly. It's interesting because for a while there we saw a significant decline and now we see, um, out of any of the districts, Richfield has stayed pretty steady across the years. And, um, other than Minneapolis and St. Paul, the other districts have ended down and did, you know, starting to, their percentages continually increased over the past few years. So some areas that, um, we have seen in Richfield that we identify as improvements is our placements at 287. We worked really hard, um, with the belief that, um, all of our students are our students. They're our community, um, members, and as much as possible, we want to serve our students and want them to know that they're members of our rich field family. And so, um, we reduced our placements, I think when it started about six years ago, we were almost at 30. And so we're down to 12 and a replacement. That's a significant improvement. And we've worked really hard at, um, you know, they say once you're gone, you never come back. And that hasn't been our philosophy. Over the last few years, we, um, we returned, we've transitioned across age levels, about four or five students back into Richfield Public Schools successfully. Um, last year we had MBE come out. So we are on a compliance cycle where they come out and look at, every six years they come out and do a whole review of all of our special ed programs. They look at space, they look at programming, they look at, do, you know, the paperwork. They look at, they interview teachers, both general education, um, special education teachers, para educators, and administrators. And so it's a pretty intensive compliance review. They're usually here for about a week. We had one minor, um, citation and that was rectified even before, um, the end of the school year. So that was very successful. And the other thing that we have been working really, uh, and very had us with is our director of special education, we meet her today. She just became a grandma. So I said, I'll just report you to be a grandma to this very beautiful wife. Um, but she has worked really closely with our special education lead psychologist and speech language pathologist to start really looking at our evaluation process to make sure that we're using best practices and trying to figure out, um, not that we are necessarily over identifying students, but when we see discrepancies, um, either more or fewer in certain areas, that we want to really look at our evaluation practices to ensure that we are actually identifying students that are in need, um, of special education services. So that's more. Our focus areas, um, I think I, I mentioned this, um, looking into our, um, our, our practices for identifying students for specific learning disabilities and, um, emotional behavioral disorders. I do think, um, you was talking about during the study session, um, our focus on social emotional learning. Um, and embedding that not only for students, but practices for teachers to support our learners will, may have an impact on, um, on some of that, uh, some of the students that are referred. And then also our pre-referral interventions and developing a standard practice for student teacher assistancy process. So that's the pre-referral process, what interventions, um, research-based interventions are we providing to ensure that we can intervene and students may not need to be identified for special education services. So that is everything I have for you. Questions?
I would be interested to know what we do to track and investigate the areas for concern that you mentioned. So what, what do we do? How do we look into it? What happens? And then how do we document what?
Um, so the last time I presented, these two areas continue to be an area of, of, of interest. Um, one of the areas that we're looking at is special law speaks specifically to specific learning disabilities. One of the things, because we have a high, um, total speaking population, um, is looking at our, our, um, assessment tools that we, we use both Spanish version and the English version and our intelligence test or IQ test. And so making sure that, that given our unique population, that we're using the best possible tools. Um, there's lots of structuings about which tools are the best. So, um, we've reached out to MBE and are asking, um, for some of their support also in that area. But it's, um, the other area that we can look at, and you talked about the pre-referral intervention process is in, there's a lot of debate as to whether or not the discrepancy model is really the best model or if you do, um, track the success of interventions. And so looking at a response to intervention model and finding out that's, um, perhaps given our population in response to intervention versus a discrepancy model is a better means of, or more accurate means of identifying students, especially because many of them are dual injured. Um, and the state as a whole is looking at the criteria for EBB. And it's very subjective. And, um, we are not the only district across the state that is struggling with ensuring that we have consistent practices.
Yes, we have. And with EBB, uh, culturally, cultural relevant resources are key. I, I wish that we could get to be a place where our students don't really need to be as medium of just behaviors and that they can be who they are. And I, I have one teacher that might, telling me one time, like after she met me, like, oh, now I know your child is not yet. Because I'm from a very loud place. And if you don't know that, your kid is screaming and you're just out. And I'm done in that room today. And then the same, by the time the child in, uh, SMD gets to that with you. It's because some, you know, tier one and tier two interventions were not seen successful. But that probably, that, that, that might be where the problem is. Because if you're measuring a kid's knowledge. Because if you're measuring a kid's knowledge in English when there may be a newcomer and in Spanish they're doing really well, then you're already funneling to the, that evaluation that happens to also not be really relevant and biased. So really, I, if we can not get there and start looking into the very beginning of this battle and like what's saying by the teachers as out of line and what's saying out of, you know, lack of knowledge and maybe lack of language.
For certain, I mean, that coming up with some really strong interventions, pre-referral interventions and practices in the classroom, both for the social emotional, the culturally relevant. So there's just a lot of work that we have. We have a good start in the process, but we have, we have a ways to go to ensure that we have standard practices and good interventions, not just for the students, but also supports of the teachers.
I think you do a great job of pointing out how those two are very connected. That not having a very strong pre-referral intervention standard process with our staff teams leads to those over identifications. And so the focus is at the bottom of that slide, which will then inherently help us improve that identification.
Which is, I am also hopeful that the student behavior policy, which will be up shortly, in particular for our Black students who are being, I mean significantly over identified for EBD. As you, as you mentioned, the subjectivity and racial bias related to that is profound and there is ample evidence that that is part of what is happening here. And so I am eager to see as we move forward with implementing new behavior policy and again, are providing our staff and our families and our students with more information, more transparency, more supports and just consistency. I am eager to see if we see some changes on that particular area of identification that you're pointing out for us.
Absolutely. And I do think that engaging our families in a lot of this work, we don't see the change right now. But I do think that their knowledge and their experience and their voice about exactly what you said. I mean, obviously in the office, I'm very knowledgeable. I'm a big speaker, so trying to understand differences. I think our focus will be able to contribute a lot to that discussion.
I had one other thing. I was gonna say that's not the question, but a success, a success story that I was really moved by. You know, we do have a very small number of resident students who are in 287 programs, as you acknowledged. But I was able to attend the high school graduation ceremony at the South Education Center for the Alternative Learning Center. And the valedictorian and MC of the evening's events is a Richfield resident student who scored perfect on his ACT and received a virtually full ride scholarship to Gist Davis Advisance College. And I think that is a signal, again, of how do we find the programs? How do we find the supports that students need? Whether it is within our district or for this student, it was obviously a Zika. And so I just think hearing those stories of success are also so important to share.
Absolutely. That's what we do. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay. We do not have any recommendations this evening. So we'll end the superintendent update here. And the next item is approval of the consent agenda containing routine business items. As always, if there is an item that somebody would want pulled for independent consideration, we can do that at this time. Otherwise, we could move forward with a motion to approve the consent agenda before us.
I know that we approved the consent agenda. I'll second.
So we have a motion by Ms. Cole and a second by Ms. Malik. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the consent agenda is approved. I'm gonna take this moment to say, Mary, is the volume okay for you in terms of notes? I know with the rain, it was a little bit challenging earlier. Okay. So we have several items of old business before us this evening, two existing district policies that have been undergoing a lot of revision over many months, as well as some change orders related to facilities work and a proposed lease agreement. So many things. We are beginning with the final read of board policy 547 and accompanying guidelines. Superintendent Unowski, would you like to introduce this?
I believe we are bringing to the final read of 547, which is our student dress and appearance and the accompanying guidelines, which are the specific dress policy that applies to Richfield Dual Language School. This is going through, I believe, five reads at the school board to really find two, including one slight language change right today to make sure that we are clear. So just as a reminder, this is going in front of groups of parents. This is going in front of staff. This is going in front of family members and our safety and supportive schools group. A lot of the conversation was around what is appropriate, what is not. And then also hats and headgear. So this is a reminder, hats are defined as those things with a brim. Headgear is basically everything else. Hats are not planned for school, however, headgear is. And so that allowed for a wide range of opportunities. And headgear is allowable in school, provided that it does not materially disrupt the student's ability to engage in student learning. In terms of clothing, clothing, covering, covering undergarments and also private parts, also just as a reminder, things that don't create a help asset, things inappropriate for the activity. And then the accompanying things that are basically the opposite of that, which are not necessarily the appropriate things towards school. And then this policy also allows me to create dress guidelines, which are there sitting there at Richfield Dual Language as part of 547.1. So with that, I'll bring these two for questions.
Can you actually specifically talk about that wording that was added late this afternoon?
Yes.
Or I can do it if you would like.
Yes. So there was some confusion based on the board notes of the last meeting where it was talking about headgear, that headgear can be worn for cultural or religious reasons. But the reality is we approved headgear for all reasons and so that was taken out. We actually relocated that to a different location of the policy because we wanted to be clear about that being okay for all COVID. So if you look in section three, general statement of policy, subsection C, I, I, I.
No.
No.
B1.
B1, okay. Uh, B1, right. That is where we ended up at. Okay. Full and covering all things that are appropriate. And the last sentence in that statement fully warrants medical, cultural or religious observances are allowed. And so we just wanted to make sure that we're clearly here, putting that in there and taking that specifically out of that headgear because again, headgear is considered appropriate.
Thank you.
And that had been in prior to the edit between June and July. With that, I want to ask for questions.
It's really hard to look up and down the table here. I just want to make sure that there is time in case there is anything people would want to say. Otherwise, we could entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move the item as presented.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Pauls and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the policy is approved. Congratulations for a lot of hard work that went into this. So next is another proposed final read of a policy that's been undergoing significant change. This one's related to student behavior.
Right. And before I jump into that, so board members, as we are in this straight line, if there are adjustments we'd like prior to the next board meeting or if this to be authorized.
It's already on my list.
Yeah. Since we're finally coming back to this temporary rotation, please let us know and we will adjust accordingly for future meetings. All right. So 541, student behavior and administrative guidelines, along with the violations chart and responses and levels of behavior. The passage of this among the dress code will allow us to move forward on handbooks and continue moving this process and of course, create a celebration for Dr. Clarkson to get to the end of the process. Student behavior policy similar. I believe this one is actually back for the third, fourth time. This is going through the same types of process as dress code and a wide range of input and feedback. This is actually a total rewrite. As a reminder, talking about the productive positive components of behavior and responsibilities prior to launching into those other pieces. So really talking about what is effective discipline? Why, what is the purpose of having behavior policies? And what are we all trying to accomplish with that? Trying to create a safe, parent and respectful environment. It outlines the responsibilities of the superintendent, administrators, teachers, non-classroom staff, parents, guardians and obviously also students. Talks about how we will develop or how we develop these, but then also how we'll communicate and then also what we'll do in regards to data with regard to that. And so overall, it also talks about how some of these things are differentiated for students by APs and also the 504s to make sure that we are differentiating what appropriate for our students. It goes on into guidelines to restate many of those same pieces. But then also talking about levels and responses. Should there be some things that are those things we don't want to see in school? How do we handle those? How do we organize those and what are possible responses into that? So there is a wide range of descriptors, including the procedures for consequences and administrative conference and those types of components, also for removal from school. And then also the violation chart grid and also a list of what are possible things that might happen in school and how likely we respond. And so those are, those are the types of things that then become published in our handbooks and widely distributed to make sure that we have that sent out in full. So with that, I will take a pause. I know that there are many, many pages. We have seen this multiple times, but it is a very large rewrite. And so that is in front of you today.
I just wanted to comment again on how much I appreciate the positive tone of the whole policy and something that can really take on a negative connotation where I feel like it really is an attempt to partner with the students and the families to make improvements and meet the needs of the kids. And it feels like everyone's on the same team on that policy and I really appreciate that.
And just to add to that, I know that, you know, individual schools and district-wide, we're gonna continue to work on that sort of affirmative statement of positive behavior expectations so that that is clearly articulated as well. And I think that will be really welcome. I also just want to acknowledge upfront, this is a huge change. And so we are going to learn a lot. And I'm sure there are going to be many bumps in the road. And, you know, we are going to follow it and we are gonna respond appropriately. And I hope that as people are experiencing this, they share with their schools, with district staff and with us as a board, what this is feeling like so that we can really make sure that we are staying on top of this as we try to implement something in this scope.
And now we are able to get some feedback about how it's going on in the fall. What would be if we're dying?
I'll ask for Dr. Clarkson. And so while she does that, just as a reminder, typically when we pass things during the school year, they are maybe implemented during that school year or they would be in the fall. So with us passing this now, this would actually go into fast motion with handbooks and the training staff prior to coming in. And then as teachers roll out classroom expectations and build classroom communities, this would launch out in the fall. And so at the very latest, after the first semester, which would be February, February 10th, would be the latest, we would be able to come back with that first how are things going, but we might be able to provide some preliminary information in a more informal basis.
So we will continue our safety and supportive schools committee with their students. And they'll be at, they were all very interested in how the implementation of the policies was going to be rolled out. And so in June, every building principal works for the elementary principals and secondary principals and their staff work together to come up with a plan for rolling out the changes in the policies. And then we will have the principals coming together along with the students, along with safety supporters, gathering feedback and reviewing data, discipline data, but also anecdotal data. You know, are we seeing reduction? Are we seeing consistency in implementation of the policies? And we know that we'll probably have some challenges along the way. We'll also be gathering information from, feedback from teachers. We worked really closely with Richfield Educators Association. And so the union has been a great partner with us and we anticipate they will be. So we're, we'll be confident to reduce some of the implementation, not just for this policy, but also for the rest of it.
So we might be able to provide a process update prior to February, but the data is not coming until after that.
I have a very small question on the, under the guideline, level five, the last one, incapacitation device. The column for SR has a question mark in it? Is that intended?
Page number.
Page number 100?
Um, no, a question mark should be.
Should be on.
Yeah. Thank you for pointing that out.
Can you remind me, SR?
School resource officer.
Thank you. And that's, that's different from police notification? In what way?
No, they would be one, well, depending, not every building has an SR.
Okay.
But it would be.
With those, yeah, with that clarification, I will move that we adopt the policy as presented.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Malik. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the policy is approved. Congratulations again.
She looks like she's maybe crying.
She does.
Sorry. I don't hear any noise as I watch your camera.
Okay. So next we have two change order requests for facilities work. One for work taking place at STEM and two orders, but I believe we can handle them as one approval for our DLS. So Craig, hold you, please share more.
Just a reminder, the board has authorized the administration to enter into change order agreements that are less than 25,000. But we articulated that we would continue bringing those forward. So you see what those changes are and see the actions that have taken place as part of the process. First of all, we have a change order for Richfield Sand School. This is change order one. It really is net impact of $13,434.80. Three primary components that are cost factors. One, this will save us with changes to the plumbing based on where you're familiar with the requirements are. Making sure that system lines up. That's $4,365. Some hardware changes for $651. And total fixtures and accessories changed up at $8,117. And then there were other small changes that really have a positive effect, but delineate the school program in some of those areas. So with that, I would ask for your authorization for change order one for Richfield Sand School.
Questions, comments or emotions?
I will move that we approve the change order.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Cole. Any discussion?
I just want to point out that the, the use of the comma instead of the decimal point could cause confusion in the amount. It is 13,434.8, not comma AN in case someone thinks it looks like 13,000 something or other, which it is not. It is 13,434. Correct, Peter?
That is correct.
That was your motion? Awesome.
That was my motion.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I mean, the missing digit also helps, but.
Yeah. I was looking at the total.
No, that's fine.
So with that clarification, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and our STEM change order number one is approved. So next we have a motion to approve our DLS change orders number three and four.
And here we have a net impact of a reduction of $2,912.77. Change order one is related to the plumbing quote requirements that had impacted $1,191.75. Plan review with handicap stalls, random floor stalls, adding $473. And then helical hyals, which is not a major of the high school, but was also needed at Richfield Dual Language School with some equipment in that area, increasing $6,132. And then some other mechanical areas with no cost impact as well as a clarification on the section of the lobby east wall at Richfield Dual Language School with no cost impact. And then change order four is a reduction of really these value region areas, we've been looking at bringing down that total cost of that bit at Dual Language School, which is even higher than anticipated. Looking at some options for reduced costs without negatively impacting the system and the operations of the program. Really this is tied in with primarily, I think it was the air conditioning unit at the Dual Language School in that area specifically, basically office only unit, tying that into the larger unit. And then some other things that where the destruction is not being done by. by the general contractor, but by the owner, was a part of those processes. So that net impacts, I'm saying that's $2,912.77, and we've got to Richfield Dual Language School.
Thank you. Questions or a motion?
I will move that we accept the change orders three and four for our DLS as presented.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulson and a second by Ms. Malik. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, and the change order is approved. The final item of old business is regarding the proposed lease agreement between Richfield Public Schools and Hope Church for the Richfield College Experience Program.
Thank you. And this is something that the board has previously reviewed. This is actually a green form or the formal lease agreement for your review with some of the specifics and changes that were built into that piece specifically, severed from every location in that area, from RSEP from Remondale to the location of Portland, at the Hope Presbyterian Church, which is the old former Portland Elementary School. Really what we did is we built in and negotiated a process to make sure that it was clear the guidelines that are the lease space are those that are owned by Richfield School District, so are lease space at that location, would be following all of Richfield Dual Language, or Richfield Public Schools, guidelines, policies, boards, and all the requirements that we have operating the school system. We also were clearly articulated through that process, posting of signs, banners, to ensure that any of the entry points that our students would be coming into would be following those same guidelines, especially as it relates to communication for those areas specifically, and then identified specifically kind of the shared use spaces and how those would be used as well. So this really articulated that clear process of what the radius and how that lays out. There was a change to the, we may just be even further clear. When we worked with this with our attorney, it was clear that because that lease space would be used for educational purposes, it was really leased by the district and our laws, guidelines were to be followed by that. We built that into the section on Article 31-2, the last sentence that was built into even more explicitly state that specifically that the lease premises shall be used and occupied by tenant so as to counter any precedent for future loss of enforceable reasonable requirements of the insurance carriers, but also all laws, regulations, and school board policies that apply to tenant will govern the tenant's operations within the lease premises. So we'll try and build in that more specific into that language as well. So that would be an ask for your authorization for this lease agreement. It is a period for years, but we have a termination clause in for each one of those three years. There's some guidelines that we will associate with that.
Questions or comments about the lease agreement?
I'll be honest, I have not had adequate time to review it at all. So I, I don't have any prepared comments or questions on it, and I wish I did, given, given the excitement that's generated, so.
What I can say is I would just say we worked specifically with what those concerns were with our attorney, and so articulated those specifically. We did engage Rob Anderson supporters and all for this with multiple iterations on that for clarity, and worked through that process, looking for any possible area where we saw challenges. You know, worked with them, basically partnering on what our technical guidelines are and what our expectations are as an organization, and we have not encountered any pushback in that process. So I would anticipate that that mutual working relationship would continue to be honored. We do still have that clause, I would have to give a year, not to have to execute it in that area, but it's been with the multiple legal reviews with our district legal counsel, knowing what those concerns were specifically, making sure that our students are respected in that space, that we are operating that space as a school district, and using all of our guidelines and policies more specifically all over the area as well.
How many students will be involved with this?
Right now, I think the program is right around 80 students.
What does that mean?
So it varies during the course of the year. So I think the Heisman 80 students, we started at 40, 50, and then it really varies. If, if it is in Richfield, there's the opportunity where it could expand. It's on a transportation line that provides easy access for students not only in Richfield but within other districts, so that's another opportunity. The other thing that we see in the program, we see Hyde, there's a lot of excitement with the program leadership and Dr. Will Hyde, specifically with the idea of really bringing this back to a good, strong alternative school environment where if it's created in a small nursery environment that allows that one-on-one focus on kids in an area that they can be served and there's more accountability in that space, and really able to develop those relationships in that smaller location. So I think there's opportunities that that program might throw within that space, and we have room to grow within the hallway that we're gonna be having access to.
And can we talk about, so can we talk about timing? The, obviously the intention of this particular review is that we would be beginning operations there at that site for this school year.
Correct.
Right. So does that not put us in a position where we really would, if we don't approve it at this meeting, that we would be jeopardizing that timeline?
Correct. Correct. We've already been in the process of starting reviews, starting to look at the upgrades and opportunities. They made some changes to their space already to accommodate our needs for that space as far as Florida may intend to change against that location, but we really need this action so that we can move forward and really make that a space that is accessible for that. The other key factor here is we are starting to communicate out about program for next year, and location is one of those key pieces that parents want to know. Their client going to school, and so we started publishing district calendars and materials, that's another guiding factor to it. I will articulate one of the things that we are working on when it came up to addresses is there's a Portland Avenue reference, and then there's an entrance off of the back area. That is the area that is the old Portland Elementary main entrance, and so we are working with the most office to identify that as our street address, because that would be the location that would be the primary entry point and is closest to that parking lot. We haven't gotten approval from that yet that I'm aware of, but the address would be separate because it would be a separate building and a separate entrance, and it gives a separate main address for delivery to that location specifically.
Yeah, and just thinking about the layout of that site and actually having that be sort of the main entry point also would just sort of functionally serve to distinguish that building from the church.
Absolutely.
As being more of a separate facility.
Absolutely.
Well, I, I would be willing to move the agreement as presented. I will say that the language that you added to Article 2, I think, is very clear in terms of addressing concerns relative to, you know, there had been community members who had raised concerns relative to a perceived lack of alignment between the stated values of Hope in terms of inclusivity around, specifically around LGBTQ community. And however, I think that we have been very clear in terms of what our position in policy and stated values are relative to inclusivity, and it's very clear in this document that those would be the governing policies within this lease space. And I'm confident that we have the tools that are necessary to conduct a fruitful and productive partnership, and if there are issues, then we can address them on a case-by-case basis. So.
I would be happy to move the agreement as presented. I will second it.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any further discussion? I will actually contribute to the further discussion here, because I was gonna say this earlier, just because Tim and I shared at the last board meeting that we had the opportunity to see the space, to meet with Hope staff. I also was able to meet one-on-one with Dr. Will Hyde, who is overseeing the RSEP program to talk about it, and I just want to acknowledge, I agree with everything that you just shared. And for personal reasons, it's difficult for me to vote in the affirmative, so I do not want people to be surprised that I'm gonna abstain from the vote, because that for me is an acknowledgement that all of the policies and practices, and having read the lease agreement closely, I believe, is doing our due diligence and that it will be a good space for our young people. And so I want to acknowledge that and just say that I'm gonna abstain for personal reasons as a result.
I, I just prepare everyone. I am in the exact same vote. I toured it, I like the space, I feel good about the space, I just have not had a chance to read the lease. I'm not questioning what people have said here, but given the, given the feedback that I've gotten from some of the community, I feel the need to actually review it carefully before I vote, and I've not had that opportunity.
With that, we will vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
The chair also abstains, and if I did my math correctly, that is four in favor, and therefore the lease agreement is approved. Thank you. We have two new business items before us this evening for the first time, and we'll start with the proposed school meal prices for the 2019-2020 school year.
Thank you. So we are requesting for your approval this evening in increasing our paid meal prices of 10 cents for each one of our grade levels. Really, this is driven by a required cost calculator for us to ensure that our pre-reduced program students or that, not the students, but the program isn't subsidizing our paid lunch program participants. There's a calculation that's based on participation of pre, based on reduced participation of paid students' involvement, what the total cost is of program operations. One of the driving factors, we have seen no or small increases in our commodity costs as well as our staffing costs. One of the big factors tied in with this, however, is the percentage of students that are on pre-reduced and the percentage of students that are on paid. And one of the things we know, we had a number of students that went off of pre-reduced onto paid when we looked at our pre-reduced participations past year. And so I'm gonna make a hypothesis that that is the driving factor behind that calculation change. I haven't had a formal opportunity to drive that specifically. We are looking at trying to make minimal impacts, and obviously bringing this now selecting one of that cost impact rates. The last time we approved this, we approved it less than what was required, so there's one other, five cent increment from what would have been required previously, overrated or reduced to, I think, just minimal last time. So that's one of the changes that's a part of this process. But that is something that we're driven and held accountable as far as in the auto process, as far as what that minimum meal can be, and so we are coordinating that increase at this time.
Questions or comments about the proposed school meal prices? Or we could entertain a motion if there are.
I will move the meal prices as presented.
Outstanding.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulson and a second by Ms. Cole. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye. Sorry, I forgot the please say aye part. Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the school meal prices for 2019-2020 are approved. Next is a presentation of the proposed brand messages and brand visuals for Richfield Public Schools.
Very good, thank you. So before I get started on this brand work, I just want to say how exciting it is to have been involved in this process. When we really started this conversation over a year, over a month ago, it really was about, we just need to be able to tell our story. We need the information out there, and we need to talk about it. Today, I spent the entire day interviewing candidates for our Director of Learning Communications position, and it became even more apparent, one, the importance of having a consistent brand message, having consistent brand imagery to really represent the organization, that's really been a driving factor with this involvement. And the other reason that I think I haven't did last time when we talked about this in June, is just the amazing voice of stakeholders that came up through this process, that people saying, you know, like, I wanna tell my story, I wanna be involved in this process, and really that alignment of the work that's in place. One of the things that we, and I have a regretful presentation from last time, and kind of had a lot of those changes are, but just a reminder of that level of engagement that we have through this process, sixteen meetings, two live webinars, 257 participatory meetings, 119 online feedback forums, 129 reported webinar videos, 112 paper feedback forums, and we're all a part of that engagement process to gather information. And that consistent messaging around drivers of organization and our brand promises really was something that resonated with everybody that was involved in that process, and I think everybody can find things that are connected with, and that drives that to what we were seeing when areas were being, and when schools are choosing Richfield Schools and choosing other schools. After that June meeting, we gathered some feedback, and we went back and looked at what are some changes involved stakeholder group?
Seen some flags.
I'm sorry. Bert, I mean, that's very interesting.
Maybe you're a small one, but it's not you.
That was just like the dumb reaction of like, wow, there's something really unusual happening behind you, but it's good if it's on the east side.
That's good. We were watching it earlier, so. So anyway, so after the June meeting, we gathered feedback, and there were some things where there was a lot of support for the brand messages, there was a lot of support for the change logos. There was still, there was about 50% support for the Richfield and Richfield School District image with the R and the Richfield Public Schools and some of those changes, but then there were also some things that we were asked to go back and look at specifically, things tied to how do we make it older, how do we make that R a little bit bigger so it can be used more as sports team area, as well as some of the changes on balancing and some opportunities around that. We also took a look at what is the pond opportunities and made some changes and add some things to create more flexible use with additional ponds and opportunities, and also had some internal conversations about how can this be used, how will this be enforced, but then also where is it tight and where is it loose specifically to that? And so it was interesting participating in those interviews today, having some of those conversations about when is it tight and when is it loose, and what are the things that we control and what are the things that we don't. So really kind of a couple of big changes here. We looked at, and it looks fairly similar, and we're getting strong support for that R. We continue to be in that place, but making the trunk of it so that left-hand space of the R was made older, as was the landing a little bit older to give more stability to it, and a little bit more strength in that R so it could be applied to a hard or to a sports team area, as well as being consistent. Couple other factors that we kind of kept taking a look at this. Bowling, making that left-hand side a little bit more bold is a way, if you look carefully, it kind of is very subtle on this, and we didn't line very specific, but you see that left-hand side almost forms a LUN with that angle coming out from the top and moving down. So one of the things we've been talking about is how are we LUN rich? How are we one community kind of building that place in? And the other change that is noted in here is we did change the font. For Richfield, it still has the custom R as a part of it, but it is more of a traditional serif font that was tied into it that's very similar to one of the secondary fonts that's available in the style guide that we'll be talking about in a minute. And that just was to really develop that consistency of having, previously we had some that were angled, some of them were straight, we wanted to be more consistent in that area. We did come back to that stakeholder committee that involved multiple voices with a number of different Rs of, because looking for something more unique and something more different, and I think we added about six or seven different Rs to the mix, and we could take a look at that, we're building a little bit up that one for Richfield, and really the group said those were too far away from more, too far away, pushing the edge too much. This R allows us to be a little bit more traditional with a little bit of edge towards contemporary, after spending a little bit. So moving in, again, in this brand style guide, you see that messaging is a key part of it. Those are the strengths, those are the things that we talked about. Don't leave, we made any changes to those areas. We still are enriching and supporting learning, the real community, those components tied with the personalized learning, rich opportunities, information, and action. One of the questions that came up is, are those replacing our mission? Are those replacing our core values? And so CBL took that feedback and built those back into this style guide, so it's not like we're leaving that behind and moving to something different, but those still are parts of the mission and will be something that we review to the strategic plan. Hopefully, people have seen those four brand messages or brand promises embedded within that Richfield Public Schools inspires and empowers individuals to learn, grow, and accept. Still, the focus on the individual and that personal learning, we have that community of coming together to inspire and empower individuals, and then that focus on improvement and strength and channeling reverse force work. Again, we kind of talked about that change to the Richfield Public Schools, that is the district brand specifically, and I have a type, that shows up on the website, that shows up on print publications. Eventually, that will be built into our facilities project, and we'll start to be implementing with our signage in those areas. You can see in that section here, how might that be showing up in some electronic formats. The other thing you can see here is that we added colors to some of those diamonds in some areas. So the diamond in the logo that you'll see on the next slide is that same kernel red, which is the darker red that we, that you're seeing in most of our publications. which is the darker red that we've, that you're seeing in most of our publications and materials right now. But there's opportunities to really build colors in. And one of the things that that really is meant to do is kind of bring together, show a little more diversity within the organization, parent honoring that piece. As well as we worked with the whole architects, and people see a lot of those colors built into the interior finishes of the work that we're doing, and so it's a way to bring some color into that area as well. You can see how that shows up on a branding wall. Each one of the schools is having a branding wall built out, and so that's a way to bring that diamond shape in. And just a reminder from what we talked about, that diamond shape really is an option of the tradition of Richfield Public Schools. It was on the, you know, the entry point to Richfield High School when it was first built. It is in our, Richfield Spartan head as part of that product and as part of that design. And so it's bringing that area into place as well. The other thing that the diamonds really do is incorporate, as we work through this, first and foremost, that circle around the diamonds represents the community that encompasses and supports our students. So it's the surrounding of the Richfield students and that R in the middle of that. Uniquely, it also allows us to kind of talk about each one of those brand promises for different sides. We have four brand promises that are part of it. The other piece in the rich opportunities, we talked about academics, athletics, activities, and the arts. And each one of those points can be a part of that, as well as the idea of, the points really allowing us to have, allows students to go in any direction that they choose, providing those opportunities and helping supporting them in that work of, in their ecosystem, allowing them to go any direction that they want. So this kind of highlights a way that we chose to kind of reinforce a secondary option, not just having the R with the Richfield Public Schools as part of that district brand, but also having the R with a diamond around Richfield Public Schools. One of the things that we found is that there are a lot of people that were driven to the diamond around the R, which works in a lot of different areas, but practically it doesn't necessarily work. We have that surrounded in a larger R format, so it provides some flexibility around that. And then having each one of our school brands or sub-brands having that similar consistent message of having the R with a diamond in it with Richfield on it, and then having a specific program or the specific school identified underneath it. One of the things that we've heard throughout the process is wanting to have all of our schools united, having it be very clear that each one of our schools is part of Richfield Public Schools. And then accurate, clearly articulated at the elementary level, moving up to the middle school, moving up to the high school, as well as for our alternative programs and other areas as well. So that brings that forward. This is part of the style guide, really kind of builds in some of the specifics of how fonts are used, both in primary and secondary, to clarity, and examples of where that's, where that's articulated specifically in the different fonts that are chosen. CBL worked and identified what are the fonts that most match up that go with this brand. With the primary having a random text, Microsoft has a free text that's TW, TW Sim, and the different options tied in with it, as well as a web font that's connected in with it. I'm a business, I grew up in the newspaper business, and so I always thought serif font was the easiest to read. Well, it's easiest to read in print publications, and when we start using electronic publications, it's always a standstill, that is more easy to read, or easier to read as part of that process, so that builds in there. And then you can see at the bottom, there's apparel's font as a second option for Richfield. It doesn't have the custom R, but it's very similar to the rest of the Richfield font. So when we talked about affordability and concerns about not having the same flexibility, it doesn't allow that R to be built in, but still provides that release of brand associated with that. And then some of the brand details that are connected in that. The other thing that we're talking about some of the ones, these are things that we would be looking at from a Richfield School District perspective. So these are things, when we're looking at our uniforms, when we're looking at our websites, when we're looking at our publication, we would be operating within this. We obviously have loser groups and student groups and things like that that are outside of that, and it's absolutely reasonable that if they are looking at variations of Richfield, that that Richfield font could be different. Our standards for those situations will be tied specifically to asking them to honor the R with a diamond, the specific areas on that, as well as this part of the graphic that should be seen as well. So there is that flexibility that still is connected in with that as well. And then the other thing, I mentioned on the previous slide, is we're also not changing mascots for their elementary buildings. We're going to build those off, so each one of those buildings maintains their own identity. And then here's just kind of showing some of those colors of the color palette of some of the other ways that we might incorporate some secondary colors into it that isn't just that cardinal red that's specifically articulated here for Richfield. Sample of how that might show up on the website for an initial design, some little work in that area. And then this really kind of becomes that sports mascot, that Spartan mascot. We talked about this as kind of just like these elementary parents were very concerned about having a warrior or a Spartan as part of their brand image and kind of where there's some connection. And so that's where the R with the Richfield Public Schools is more of a district logo. The Spartan is really more of that sports and athletic, although the R can be used in different capacities with that athletic brand as well. There's different ways that that shows up. Talk about this last time, this really had strong support through the process, and people being excited about it. I think those are various. These are some different ways that that's kind of also been articulated. The athletic jerseys, how that might show up. I had a chance to meet with the varsity baseball coach and looked at different options, and one of the thoughts came up of saying, well, if we put that diamond around the R as another option. It isn't that that's the way it has to be, but it just shows the versatility of it. He actually found a, he kind of came up with that idea, he had seen a hat that was the old Rutgers that had a design that was very similar to that, that was connected in that way. And so it's just another way for that to show up in that area, and then just how that shows up in different uniforms and different opportunities specifically tied into that. And that kind of wraps up that piece. I do know that we had some questions about the affordability of this, how does it lay out? We really think that kind of lining up with some standard fonts provides some opportunities for us, for groups that are outside of the schools and outside of kind of the uniform or the electronic publication, to be giving some latitude, but still being able to line up with that rich, that equity that we're hoping people engage in. But also knowing the fact that there will be times when students just want a Richfield that's a traditional R or lock letter, or Richfield that's there that looks more like that traditional. So it doesn't eliminate that for student groups who engage in that sort of work, but for anything that is district sponsored, those are the things that really would specifically be lining up with these products. I think, you know, I would just kind of one, so one piece, and then with the signage, those things, as far as implementation of this, those things, if we're able to move on this, those are allowed to start to be implemented as part of our facilities project at our school, dual language schools and staff school. We're already half a month behind when we are hoping to be for our Richfield signs and things like that, so there's a little urgency to make that happen as well. That I would stand for any questions, and we've been really appreciative of the many people who've been involved in the process. One of the things that CBL talked about is, there's a lot of engagement within this community, and a lot of excitement for what's happening, a lot of ownership for Richfield, and we're trying now to have that absolute diminution of the voice as the broad community and really bring the opportunities for Richfield Public Schools.
Sorry, we are having a computer issue over here. Yeah, I imagine there are a number of comments and questions before we get to the point of potentially taking action this evening, so I want to open it up for that.
If I could start, yeah, Craig, I'd ask a number of questions, and I think you answered some of them. You know, like the optional standard font or true type font or whatever for stitching is helpful and does provide an opportunity for apparel to not incur extra costs. You know, the custom R does on stitching and embroidery, and so there is, I mean, there is still some cost on that. You know, as I've been told more and learned more, I mean, my questions have kind of shifted. And, and so I just, you know, I've been asked like, at which point certain things, certain ideas were decided and cast aside, like the idea of, what was it, like the Minnetonka model, which has an athletic M and then a different corporate district logo and font? And asked if that was feasible or something we would entertain?
So we really have had that conversation throughout the process, even back to some of the original stakeholder groups, from the standpoint of, A, is the R the right graphic image to be representing the district? Through those conversations versus kind of, if you look at some districts that are kids holding hands, there's some districts where there's random problems that really don't identify that community specifically. One of the things that we kept here throughout the process is, we are Richfield. And Richfield Public Schools serves Richfield. And that R or MR is the best way to be representing Richfield Public Schools and that commitment to our community. And so we've heard that a couple of different places along the way. The, so the graphic image versus that, the question, can we have two Rs? That conversation also has had a couple of different places to that process, and the general feedback that we got from the stakeholder groups is, it just confused them. So right now, we have Bana that has one R, we have baseball that has another R. We have different activities and different organizations that have been using different Rs throughout the process. And not having kind of that release of rank doesn't allow people to look at each one of our groups of students and say, oh, that must be Richfield Public Schools. Is that a Richfield? You know, so what is that connection, having that representation back to the whole school system? So we're not just seen as a school that doesn't have the athletics, doesn't have the activities, or anything. So we've had that conversation throughout the process. Specifically asked the question, should we be going with an image instead of the R as the R right thing to have? And that commitment to needing to have that centerpiece in our group of Richfield School District and used throughout the organization was seen as the best value investing tool for work we're trying to do, showing one of the brand and the broad scope of who we are in Richfield Schools. Knowing that people were refused when we did the survey back last spring. Well, they don't have this program, they don't have that program, and which school is which? So that was another foundational piece we were putting in.
So with that in mind, I mean, I don't think Minnetonka suffers for that, but we do apparently. And in part, it's because we've allowed the different activities and things to choose their own. If we enforce it and said, this is the one for secondary activities and athletics, and the rest was the one for the corporate district, that problem should vanish. I mean, other than the type set one for the website and so.
And just, Minnetonka also serves more than Minnetonka. So Minnetonka is actually multiple communities within that district. So I don't know kind of how that kind of evolved or what those connections were.
No, yeah, no, I don't know how it came to be either. But, okay, so with that, if the R is chosen as a signature thing, I guess the question that those groups would ask is, why has their R not been considered at all seemingly? The one that, you know, we have a nod to tradition with the diamond that no one remembers, right? But we don't have a nod to tradition in the way that there are people who believe that we've had that R in certain function for 30, 40 years. And we don't have, the history doesn't go back more than 45 years, so it's not like only 30 or 40 is insignificant to the scope. And so there's never been a mock-up seemingly, and there's never been an opportunity to compare that more traditional R, which could itself be a nod to tradition in the same way that we're hyping the diamond to the custom font here.
So there wasn't necessarily a mock-up, but we've asked that question at multiple points along the way as well. So in fiscal funding, private committee, for example, when the conversation started to come up about the baseball R as being something that there was some strong interest represented by individuals in that area. When we look at our brand messages and our brand promises of real community, personal learning, rich opportunities, innovation, action, does that graphic image represent those brand messages? And the feedback that we got at that group specifically, as well as in other conversations, was no, that doesn't represent the innovation before we're thinking that it puts different connections. Even the diamond isn't the traditional diamond that we built in, but it is a way that we've built that through the process. So the question has been asked at different points along that path, not necessarily specifically, but we also didn't draft up the marching gown. We didn't draft up each one, we didn't draft up the script R that used to be in the high school as a model for that process. So we didn't take each one of those Rs, we didn't take the letter jacket R that's been used in modeling that specifically because there were so many different Rs that were being used across the organization. And knowing kind of where those themes were going and the feedback that we're getting through the process early on, that those seem to connect with this current design better. And it's obviously made a lot of different transformations from the very beginning where we started.
Fortunately.
But...
Fortunately.
Absolutely. You know, but there were also people that liked that as well, and then people that didn't. And so one of the things that I found is, there's a very subjective involvement in this of what people like and what people don't like.
And personal.
And personal.
Absolutely, I mean, personal, but it is, it's a personal emotion, absolutely, so, and, you know, absolutely honoring that. The other things that we talked about at that last stakeholder group is, there are alumni, there are people that, that's their piece. There are people that graduate from different colleges who have changed their stuff, and they still hold their mascots, and we're not asking alumni to give up their mascots, giving up their pieces, just as we are as an organization, trying to create a close brand boost and knowing who our customers and community are now that are making choices about our schools and making choices about the involvement and kind of connecting, which is where a lot of those frames really goes to evolve from.
Do we really believe they're choosing on the font? Or the consistent, or a consistent application of one?
I, I think that people are not choosing based on what is on. People are not choosing based on, is it a Spartan, is it a skipper, is it a hornet, is it what is? But having that image of showing a cohesive organization. And I think you heard some communication about that earlier tonight of needing to see one district operating together as being an important piece that parents who are making decisions want to see a system that's operating as a system, that has a clear purpose, that has a clear vision, and has a clear vision. There are reasons companies spend millions and millions and millions of dollars in doing this work. Is because it's not a, I'm choosing this because of this, but it is how they are represented as a part of it. So is that the driving factor? No, but having something that represents the broad community and seeing the feedback through the process and knowing there's a lot of different tweaks that people are looking at as far as involving that piece. But the support of people looking for the contemporary, there are people that came to stakeholder committees and said, I came because I want to make sure that we change because what we have is not valid. So just as there are people that are saying, I came because I'm committed to the tradition and I'm such a part of this organization, and in this process, we try to absolutely honor those voices and realize that that's a viable piece. I connect with people who have that passion for that work and said, even if this goes a different way, I'm hoping that we can involve you in the process of how we continue to build this brand. And people who are strong on one R or more traditional piece have also said to me, it's also worth that we have one brand as our decision.
A moment ago, you had said, you know, they were strong that what we have doesn't work. Are they speaking of the, the array of Rs that we have not marshaled our ability to be consistent with? Or specifically one versus another, like the letter R, the script R, or whatever?
I interpreted it, so I'll, and how I heard it. The array of Rs not having a specific...
Right, that's how I would interpret it.
But I've also heard it from the standpoint of liking the concept of innovative, liking the concept of true thinking. And when I specifically asked that question, does this represent this, does this represent this? That alignment with the brand messages was more consistent than that.
So, I mean, I guess, I guess where we're heading towards is we're going to alienate someone, and someone who feels very strongly. And in part, it seems like the path you're suggesting is to alienate the people who have a closet full of things with one R already. And, and you've spoken about consistency a number of times, but at the last booster coach meeting, someone asked and was told, you don't have to throw anything out, you can keep all that stuff and still wear it. We've encouraged, someone will hear that and say, I will never change. And that, and their booster group will buy the apparel, and they will all be wearing the different R. And so...
I know, we said it.
An entire team will be wearing it in their warm-up materials and whatever.
You mean the ones...
The ones who, yes, the ones who feel they haven't been heard, the ones who have what they believe is a traditional R.
What can you mean, say that, ones...
We can say that.
You know, make it like a transition thing?
But that's not what they were told, so why, that's, I agree with you. But if they were told in that meeting, and that's an attempt to gain their support, we would do well not to then change that message. And, and so we've introduced this inconsistency seemingly.
So the context of that response wasn't much of that, kind of what I alluded to at the alarm. So it was, we know that alumni are going to continue to wear the R. So, it was, we know that alumni are going to continue to wear the R that represented them when they were here. So, that's that context of nobody's asking people to understand who they are, but when we are representing ourselves as a school district.
And creating new things.
And creating new things. And I think that's a great point, as we talked about here, not changing over every uniform year one. Football has purchased new uniforms already for the next year that were purchased last January, February. And so, that, there will be some things that will probably be a Florida eye, new transitions part of that process. And we talked about that specifically in that stakeholder group, is we will live with one or two or multiple Rs, because we have multiple Rs out there for a few years. But as students are transitioning through that program, and as we're representing ourselves as a district, we have some opportunities to make some immediate changes in our electronic, in our expectations and things like that for next year, and start moving to that process. There are athletic groups that are excited about this and are excited to have this be part of their different purchase group this year, and are looking to have some decisions so that they can have that be involved in that process. At the same time, we know that there will be things that will take a while for people to transition. Our purchases as a district, moving forward as we go, we'll seem to align the brand standards that are within the organization.
I mean, I think we're in a position where we know that there's been a diversity of images that have been used. And any one of us may have allegiance with a particular group, but I don't think we're necessarily in a position where our allegiance to any particular group is the governing principle. It's about where we're headed, sort of moving down, down into the future, so.
No, I agree with that. The folks who've gotten, who've spoken to me said they felt they were never heard, and they felt as though they were props in this process. And that it didn't matter what they said, because the new and shiny and innovative was going to be used. And they felt in part because the messaging, when they gave feedback, the administration on site did not honor their feedback so much as the consultants' contributions, and that's how they felt about it. So, they felt while they were at these meetings, the district representative who was at the meeting was more interested in championing the work of the consultants, as opposed to hearing what some of them had to say.
So, I apologize if that's the way some people felt. Some of the conversation we had specifically is, you know, knowing that there were some people that I want this baseball R that I have on my shirt was specific. We tried to have the conversation, is there a way that that can be modified to show a more of a contemporary look, knowing that this is a vision that's been built in this message? The statement that was made back is no, because once you take away the detail, it isn't what it is. And so, it's hard to move through a conversation of working for collaboration and working to get all voices heard as part of the process. If there is not that movement, looking for one of the other options. So, I know that people are passionate about who they are, and that's the exciting part about rich old schools, is that there are people passionate about this and passionate about this work. At the same time, we have a lot of people that are really excited about something different. And, you know, trying to honor some more traditional with some contemporary, some of those different voices that we've been bringing in, or the things that we really would try and hard to do. And I will continue to outreach through those individuals when possible. We've had some conversations with a couple of different people as part of that process that have that interest. And the statements then, you know, decisions made, we'll live with it because we want to be one ritual. You know, interestingly enough, I'll just kind of throw one of these because I didn't mention this. Through this process, I actually had a senior baseball player reach out to me and said, I don't, you know, I don't find out about this because I'm in the circle. Came in and had some conversations, talked about the, while he talked about the process that was used, showed the imagery, so they actually had something that they were seeing. And the response was, I get it, I like it, this works. And so, that student voice, which honestly, I anticipated it was going to be really skeptical and be coming in with a strong drive, showed that openness to looking at something different in that process.
And I've heard exactly the opposite, right? And so, the concern of the folks with that baseball R is that, as we heard at our last meeting, it went out the survey of students a couple of things, and that won that eighty-two percent support. So, I'm positive you will find someone who likes it, and I'm positive there are many people who will like the new one. I'm just saying, this is a man-made source of consternation when everyone will agree that we need, we needed to enact a measure of consistency, control our process, control the colors, control the purchasing, all these, how we represent ourselves in a million different ways. And I just thought there was some low-hanging fruit to make that, and apparently, we swung and missed the low-hanging fruit, and now it's monopolized a lot of my time. And so, that's a sort, that's a personal source of frustration.
Well, and I would say, I attended quite a few of, I was on liaison committees where I listened to multiple people give feedback, and then I'd go to another meeting, and I actually saw feedback incorporated into what was done. So, I can see where someone might have the perception that they weren't heard, and it doesn't necessarily mean they weren't. It doesn't mean they don't feel that way.
Right.
It just means it's hard.
Yep.
So, I, I just wanted to say, my experience was that a lot of feedback was reincorporated. And I attended quite a few of those meetings. But it is hard, and people do have what they want, and so people will hold on to their old R sweatshirts.
Right.
Matter of fact, we did.
And that's fine. I'm personally excited to get in.
I do think it is important to have some reflection time at the end of this about some of the decisions that we made along the way, and the way in which people have felt, heard or unheard, right? And I want to make sure that we do take the time to do that, and that we have some, I think, good lessons from this process, which is new to all of us. And I remember, and I said this at our last meeting, one of the goals of this is that we have something that is unifying and that people are excited to get behind. I certainly don't think that we are going to be one hundred percent there. I know being one hundred percent there is also not realistic, but I think we are going to have to do a lot of work here. And I want to acknowledge that that is work that we are not responsible for. And as somebody who was asking a lot of questions about cost and potential impact for our community groups, for our school groups, I personally feel responsible for that, and I'm going to be really upset if we end up hearing that this is placing a new and unexpected burden on our community. And I think the last thing is there, and this can be part of the reflection process, like, I think the timing of how this has come to us as a board is also feeling very challenging, because we are literally at the last moment right now before the start of the school year. And I don't think that is necessarily setting all of us up to be successful as well in thinking about how many months this has been going on. So, I think part of that for me is also just where were we as a board brought in and involved as a collective along the way so that we didn't get to last month's meeting, and then tonight, and obviously are still a pretty, you know, pretty far distance from feeling ourselves like we can be unified around this. So, I just, I wanted to acknowledge all of that. I also want to say, I really appreciate this being put together for our meeting tonight. I think it's helpful to have it all in one place. I think there is a lot of good work that is reflected in this, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate that it has been an emotional, personal, and great for some people, and really not great for other people, process. And so, I just think it's important to say all of those things as we get to a point that, you know, we can take a vote this evening and then figure out what comes next. So, I just wanted to say that and make sure that other board members who want a chance to speak can do so as well.
May I ask you? May I ask you? You know, I think, okay. I just, I hear a lot of instances happens where some groups were failed listening to others did not.
Yeah.
And I think what I would like to make sure is that, to me, it's really important to engage stakeholders in all the decisions that are made, and I really don't want us to go down a path where people come up and show up and feel that they invested their time and that we already had an agenda before we even got there, and that then their presence was not really important. Because if we start doing that, people will not show up, and they will not give, you know, it won't be, we won't have that diverse set of opinions. And that's really, I mean, I said, my son is eleven, so I haven't had the time to get that personal attachment, you know, so I'm very excited about how this looks, but I acknowledge that, which is, which is, which is a community, I have a, I have a scene in the user, with here as one, so I acknowledge, you know, the feelings and the nostalgia and, and, you know, I'm in the sports, and how come we cannot have this everywhere, you know? And so, I get all of that, and I understand, I just want to make sure that, that we really get really great, the art of listening and making sure that all voices are heard and
Yeah, I mean, and obviously, the challenge is, the challenge is, especially with something where we're designing one R, is it's possible to hear and appreciate all voices, but it's not necessarily possible to reflect all voices when there's, when there's, you know, potentially conflicting opinions, and that's just a reality.
It is frustrating to me that a process that should be almost triumphant has identifiable losers.
Yeah. I guess that.
Seeing no other comments or questions, we could entertain a motion to approve the messages and visuals that have been presented to us this evening.
I will, I will move that we approve the, the rebranding work. My sense of this is, as much as we talked about process, my sense of this is that there has been, and I very much appreciate Christine's testimony on the issue, that there has been a process in place that has, and I appreciate Lori as well, sharing, because I know Lori was quite involved in multiple steps along the line. And so, I will move that we move forward respecting the process that has occurred to date.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Malik. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
The chair votes aye, and the branding is approved.
Okay.
Okay. We are going to next move into the advanced planning section of the agenda, which of course, as always, will begin with the legislative update. So, I will open it for Superintendent Yunowski and/or Mr. Tensing to start as usual.
I have nothing to offer, Steve, unless you do. A very brief minutes. I had an orientation to the Peluswee Board, and I'll have a retreat up in the Brainerd on Thursday as I become part of the state licensing board as the sole superintendent rep. And so, that will be conversations I will bring back, and then my first official meeting at the Peluswee Board will be on Friday this week. And then in your packet, and I usually go through this relatively quickly, so I'm going to, since it's forty pages, give or take, but you had the MSBA summary of legislative actions and the things that have occurred, including the budget, just as a reminder. We had a strong positive increase for public schools, a two and two percent increase, with also money for press subsidy reduction, also pre-K. And so, we were really pleased with some of the things that happened. There was also a budget that had very few required mandates, and so, as you look, there is on page thirty-two and thirty-three, obviously, a very small amount of new requirements and new reports due. And so, it is a very rare session that comes with significant support to schools and also not a lot of strings attached. And so, it was just a positive experience down at the legislature this year, and so, we just wanted to share that in its entirety. And so, anybody really wishing to read through the entire legislative summary is in your board packet, all thirty, forty pages of it.
Any other legislative items? Okay, seeing none, we can move into information and/or questions from members of the board that they would like to share.
I received an email from the city's Human Rights Commission. They had a meeting last week where they wanted to talk about the Hope Church, and I was unable to attend, I was booked that night. And so, I'd asked if they wanted a different board member to attend, and they declined that. They've raised concerns that we have not been, I've not been regular enough in my attendance, if they feel as though they only heard about that, not through me, their liaison, but from social media, which is truthfully almost where I heard about it, in a sense, and that it was at that city plan and things, so. But they did raise the issue, and so, I wanted to share that from one of the committees.
I appreciate that you offered to see if somebody else was willing to attend, which I think is, you know, if you can't attend, that is the best that you can do.
Right.
So, you know, please continue to do that, and let us know how we can.
Sure.
Be supportive for you and for that commission. I alluded to this in the study session, actually, when I gave the board and the folks at the study session a little bit of a preview, that the superintendent and I have been having some conversations about changing timing around of board packets and updates to board packets. And just the challenges of things being added during the day on Monday, and what that means for all of us in terms of timing, and feel like we can do our due diligence as board members. And also, just ensuring that we have enough time, period, from when the packet is originally released on Friday at our current point in time. And I will say, I also have concerns about work that that leads to for our staff, who are then fielding questions and comments from us over the weekend, and have to, no doubt, dedicate a lot of time on their Monday, just to follow up and make sure that things are taken care of in advance of the board meeting on Monday evening. So, with that, I wanted to share what Steve and I discussed, and, you know, give you all time to think about it or share thoughts immediately in the moment, knowing that this would represent some real change for our staff and some of our partners in particular. But what we have discussed would be changing the timeline so that board members would get a full draft packet on Wednesday prior to a board meeting, and that at that time, the agenda page would be posted online for the community to see. So, they could at least see the items that are on the agenda, starting on Wednesday prior to the board meeting. Then, the final full packet would be both updated and shared with board members and posted to the website on Friday. And with that would come the expectation that anything not in the packet at that point in time on that Friday would then not be discussed or voted on at the meeting the coming Monday, with extremely rare circumstances that the board chair and the superintendent would agree upon. So, in talking this through, I think both of us felt like that could represent a really positive step for staff, for board members, for community members who want to know what we are doing, and feel like they also have adequate time to know what is on the agenda and what is in that sometimes three-hundred-page board packet, and have confidence that it's not going to change from Friday afternoon until our meeting on Monday evening. So, that is what Steve and I have been discussing. And so, again, feel free to take some time to think about it or to share in the moment, but I think with board member support, that is what I would like to see us be moving towards in terms of our practices.
I would welcome that.
Yeah. As I recall, when we shifted from paper packets to electronic, part of the goal was to have access to that much earlier than Friday. So, I think that would be great.
So, seeing or hearing no concerns, we will start working to put some of that in motion, again, knowing it's going to be a little bit of a transition process, but thanks for what people shared here and what seems to be general support for moving in that direction for all of us, including for staff. Let me do one final check for any other information or questions from the board for each other before I keep moving. Okay. Our next scheduled meeting will take place on Monday, August 5th, tentatively scheduled for this location again. Our second meeting in August will be held on Monday, August 19th, and that is the meeting that will begin with opportunity for public comment. I misstated that earlier, so I apologize. There will not be opportunity for public comment. There will not be opportunity for public comment on Monday, August 5th, but will be on Monday, August 19th. Finally, are there any items that board members would like to request for discussion on an upcoming agenda? Noting a couple of things that have already come up this evening as far as future topics of conversation, such as implementation of our new behavior policy. All right, before we entertain a motion to move into closed session, I want to thank everyone for being here with us tonight. I know it has been a long meeting with some dramatic weather and clouds, so thank you. We hope to see you again soon. The board will now move into closed session for the purposes of conducting our annuals. I'm getting to that. I'm prefacing, this is context. No, it's okay. I'm glad, I need that. So it is for conducting our annual evaluation of Stephen Yunowski as the district superintendent, which is allowed by Minnesota State Statute thirteen D point oh five. And in accordance with the same statute, a summary of this closed session will be shared at our next meeting on August 5th. So with that context that that is what we are about to do, do we have a motion to move into closed session?
So moved.
Second. So a motion by Mr. Pauls and a second by Ms. Malik. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the closed session will begin after a brief recess. Thank you.